Good evening and welcome to tonight's Monroe City Council meeting. This is the regular business meeting for Tuesday, July 11th, 2023. The time right now is 7:00 PM. I'll ask Clerk Wykoff to please call the roll.
Thank you, Mayor. Council members present and establishing a quorum are Council members Foulter, Kenny Hanford, Davis, Gamble, and Scarborough.
Thank you. And we'll, and Councilmember Davis is here in chambers. And for the record, Councilmember Fisher had contacted me yesterday and advised that he was on deployment. So our thoughts and prayers are with him for his safety and his crew as well. So he, unless there's objection, will consider him as being an excuse absence this evening. Saying no objection, I'm going to ask the council, Councilmember Scarborough, to please lead us in the pledge. Thank you. Thank you. Before we begin, just a couple of housekeeping items. First, I thank very much the Monroe School District for working with us for the next, hopefully, two years where we will be meeting here for our city council meetings. This is a really great facility and a really great resource for our community. And we at the city are greatly appreciative of being able to use the space. So thank you very much to our Monroe School District. The second item for council members, just a couple of items of note for this evening. The first item is that in order to use your microphones this evening, you will need to press the push button that is at the base. I would invite each of you to push that button at this time. One of, one pair of you will need to share. You'll note that the buttons are required just a little bit more of a push to them. And also that our staff is advised you need to kind of lean into the microphones to be heard. So if, when I call on you, please pull the microphone closer to yourselves so that you can be heard. The second item, and again, red means that your microphones are hot. So red, hot like fire, just like in chambers. And the microphones, when you are closer to them, everything will get picked up. So I encourage you to turn them off when you are not recognized to speak. The other item is at least for this evening, as everybody's aware, back in council chambers, you push the base of your microphone and that tells me that you'd like to speak. And then the computer puts down who, who put their things in and everything. When I started as a council member, there was a red light thing and you pressed the red light. The mayor had to try to keep track as to who wanted to speak. And the red lights were something. We're going to go even older school than the red lights of those magic microphones. Tonight only, so you're going to want to keep this. This is going to be one of those legacy things you want to keep a souvenir. We have these magic pieces of paper. If you would like to speak this evening, what I'm going to ask you to do is just take the paper and put it up like that. Okay. After I've called on you and you're done speaking, lay it down. Want to speak? Put it up. High-techy tech tonight, okay? We will have something else that is a little bit more durable for future council meetings, probably by our next meeting in about two weeks. We don't know what that'll look like yet. What I don't want is going back to the days of Welcome Back, Cotta, with somebody saying, Mr. Cotta, Mr. Man, Mr. Man, like that, waiting to be called on. What I am going to do on my side is I will make a list of people that want to speak and then I'll cross your names off as I call you. So that's how I'll be tracking things on this side. They, see if there's anything else that we need to go through. Public will speak right there at the podium. And everybody can see where the boards are around you. If you're having problems reading the motions or anything like that, please let us know. We will welcome any feedback that you've got. One of the things that staff can do is certainly print out a copy of this presentation for people that would like it. And then like that, if you're having a hard time seeing something on the other side of the room, we can at least have a printout in front of you or set up your laptop so that the PowerPoint presentation is there. So please feel free to give me feedback at the end of the meeting or before the next meeting at least. And we can make arrangements to help out with that. I think that's all I had. Yes, exec sessions, and we do not have one tonight. I was going to make a joke, but I won't say that we have a 20-hour exec session tonight. Exec sessions will be in that room. Now, one thing that's really important is that when you are done with the exec session, open the door and put the wedge under the door. Because there's something about the doors where they lock and staff can't get back in. And we're going to have equipment in there. And we may not be able to get the equipment until the next day unless we can track down somebody from facilities to unlock the door. So let's all make certain that when we walk out of that room, we open the door and the wedge goes underneath the door to keep it open until staff is done in there. All right, anything else? All right, all right, Debra, are we missing anything? Okay. Thank you very much. So we are now going to move on to announcements and presentations. And I'm going to invite Chief Jolly to come forward. Chief Jolly.
Thank you. Good evening for allowing me to come before the council tonight to honor four members of the Monroe Police Department. I would like to thank the mayor, the council, the members of the Monroe Police Department, and attendees for being here tonight. I'm very excited about this and very happy and honored to be a small part of presenting this. We had four officers, but please excuse Officer Coleman and retired Officer Michelle. They are unable to attend tonight. I will be presenting the team unit award to each member of the department who assisted with this dynamic situation responding to a shooting call. Further, I will present to the officers which are here tonight with the life-saving award for their rendering of trauma care to the victim. All of these officers are to be commended for their unselfish and fearless acts involving this call. Officer Van Eaton, Officer Winfrey, can you come up, please? We're still getting the choreography down to this room. So this might take a little bit, but go ahead. We should have done a test run earlier. Major, would you like to help us? No, Dad says no. I'd like to present the life-saving and team award to Officer Sean Van Eaton and Officer Garrett Winfrey. On May 9th, 2022, at 8:41 PM, Officer Sean Van Eaton, Garrett Winfrey, Luther Coleman, and retired Officer Max Michelle were dispatched to assist the Snohomish County Sheriff's Office on a shots fired incident involving a male subject with multiple gunshot wounds. This incident was the result of a road rage gone wrong as the victim was followed to his home up in the county area. Arriving at the call, officers encountered a tense and chaotic scene. Multiple bystanders were on scene, including the shooter, and had to be ordered to the ground to ensure the safety of the first responders. Once the scene was assessed, the officers observed a truck that was hit by multiple gunshots and a male victim with multiple gunshot wounds. Officer Sean Van Eaton contacted the male victim who appeared to have multiple wounds. Assessing the urgency needed to render aid, Officer Van Eaton applied a tourniquet to the man's leg to control bleeding and continued providing first aid until medical personnel arrived. While Officer Van Eaton began applying a tourniquet to the male's leg, Officer Garrett Winfrey assisted the male's injuries to his upper torso. The male was in extreme pain and unable to communicate his injuries. In assessing the male's injuries, Officer Winfrey saw that the male appeared to have sustained a gunshot wound below his right shoulder. Officer Winfrey immediately recognized the urgency of the injury and applied gauze to the wound and maintained pressure on the wound until medical aid arrived. If not for Officer Van Eaton and Officer Winfrey's actions in maintaining blood control for the victim, it is likely the victim's injuries would have led to his death. The Monroe Police Life Saving Award is given to those who face risk and/or overcome adversity while performing a task that preserves human life. It is my honor to present Sean Van Eaton and Garrett Winfrey with the Monroe Police Department Life Saving Award and Unit Team Award for their actions in rendering trauma care to the male victim with multiple gunshot wounds.
In recognition of your quick actions taken on May 9th, 2022, rendering trauma care to a male subject with multiple gunshot wounds, you immediately recognized the urgency and applied a tourniquet to control the bleeding and continued providing first aid until medical aid arrived. Your quick actions preserved the life of the victim demonstrated the utmost professionalism, dedication, and excellence. We are proud of your efforts and on you, Mr. Lord.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chief. And we're proud of all of you for our job. Well done. Thank you. Okay, we're going to go ahead and move on to public comments. This is a time set aside for members of the public to speak to the city council on any issue related to the city of Monroe, except any quasi-judicial matter that is subject to the public hearing. Three minutes are allowed for each speaker. I'm going to ask that the Clerk Wykoff will put the three minutes on. If, if, so we don't have anybody who signed up this evening. If you're interested in speaking this evening and you're here in the audience, you can go ahead and put your hand up. Come on up, Janelle. And I will note also that we have one attendee, just letting Jacob Walker know that I do see your hand up. So I will call on you next. Go ahead, Janelle.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I want to say just thank you to our Monroe City Council and also to our police department. Congratulations. It's really humbling to live and work in Monroe and this community. It just feels really good. So with that said, I have three minutes. I want you all to imagine a place where tourists and residents of the city can gather, feel connected, and enjoy themselves either at an event, a wedding, have a special occasion, bringing our younger generation together and just create that community and create memories in a place where outdoor elements of rain don't hinder under the circumstances. I'm asking for the city council to consider creating a space of an indoor event center for everyone in Monroe that they can enjoy, making our community stronger. It has been a lifelong dream of mine, as the city grows, to have a place that everyone can utilize, a space not only for the chamber, but also for other organizations and Monroe residents that they could use. I would think so many surrounding cities have these special places, and they do, but Monroe does not. When the sunny skies of spring and summer end, we are left with six months of rain and cold weather. Having an indoor facility would open Monroe up to new opportunities for year-round events that bring revenue and business to our local economy and help put us on the map for tourists in winter. An event center would help pull the millions of drivers off Highway 2 in Monroe because something is actually happening on a Saturday or Sunday in Monroe. And I know what you all are thinking. We have the Evergreen State Fairgrounds, but that's not the hub and heart of Monroe. When I think of Monroe and where an event center can be, I think of someplace we already have access to and a beautiful landscape in the parking that is needed. I also think of the Central School District and also the Sky River Park. It had, already has a picturesque qualities and amazing location. That is not for me to decide. It is up to you and for this is not, if this is a priority or not in the future. I believe it really is. And as the city grows and imagining a place that can bring people together, feel safe, belong, and community stronger, I believe in my heart that this is the start. Thank you. And also, side note, I wanted to share an idea that came to mind today, and I will bring it up to our EDAB meeting, but bringing a illuminated reader board to Main Street or to Highway 2 to help with downtown businesses, Highway 2 businesses, North Kelsey, something that captures all the drivers and the passersby that enter this, this, through our city. We're always that destination that people just drive through, but how can we pull them off? And that is something that has been a question for many of us for a long time. And I really feel that something of that value can be added to the city of Monroe. Thank you.
Thank you, Chamber Director. Okay, I, it looks like the attendee has decided to not have their hand up. So is there anybody else who would like to speak this evening? Okay, not seeing anybody else here in public. We're going to go ahead and move on to the next item on the agenda. And that item will be the consent agenda. So I turn to the council. Just put your yellow thing up. Oh, Councilmember Hanford, go ahead. As I-
Move to approve the consent agenda as listed.
Have a motion to approve the consent agenda from Councilmember Hanford, a second from Councilmember Scarborough. Any discussion on the motion? Saying none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes 6-0. Thank you, everybody. Next item on the agenda is new business item 7.1, ordinance number 0112023. This is the 2023-2024 Budget Amendment Ordinance for First Reading with our Finance Director Hassert. Director Hassert, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the budget amendment is in your packet with all the detail on what is being proposed for amendment. Basically, this is our annual housekeeping fiscal cleanup. We true-up beginning fund balances. We acknowledge actions that council has already taken to date. And then if there were some emergent items that appeared, we try and capture that as well. This is not the biennial budget adjustment. So I do want to make that clear. That is going to be starting here in August. And again, it's not a full-on budget process. So with that, there is some analysis in the attachments that talk about why the beginning fund balances came in where they did. And I am available for any questions, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you very much. Are there any questions from council or is there a motion or requested actions on the screen for your reference? Councilmember Foulter, go ahead. See, I don't have to turn on your microphone.
Thank you. I think I got it all. I move to accept as first reading ordinance number 0112023, amending the budget for the fiscal biennium 2023 through 2024 to account for the beginning fund balances and new or decreased revenues and expenditures for 2023, providing for severability and establishing an effective date.
I have a motion from Councilmember Foulter, a second from Councilmember Kenny for the requested action in new business item number 7.1 that's shown on the screen. Any discussion on the motion? Saying none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes 6-0. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is new business item number 7.2. This is Conference of Plan Amendment, School Mitigation Fees Code Amendment. And I do show that seen, that Planner Bright is on there, but this is-
Here in her, in her-
Okay, this will be Director Bailey. Director Bailey, go ahead.
Pardon me while I get my choreography set up. Just a whole change. I don't like speaking at podiums, I'm going to be honest with you. I'm a desk guy. So before you this evening is our two ordnance, or two ordinances. Why don't I can read it right over there? And one, first off, it's to, this involves school, school impact mitigation fees. And first ordinance will adopt, or is proposing to adopt by reference into our comprehensive plan, both the Snohomish and Monroe School District Capital Facilities Plan for 2022 through 2, through 2027. And the second ordinance will adopt into the city's code, into our fee schedule, the, the impact fees that they, that they've adopted. So, so as a, as a part of their, as a part of their capital facilities plan, the, both of the school districts use a formula to adopt what the school impact fees are. And I'll point out in the agenda bill that the fees for the Monroe School District have actually gone down a little bit and Snohomish has gone up. And those formulas are based on the number of students that are in each, each of the districts. So that's why, that's why you see that difference. The city, the city collects these fees as a part of our, as a part of our permit review process, and we're just a pass-through. So we don't receive any of the money. We collect them and then on a monthly basis, we disperse it out to the, to the school district. So we're adopting these to be in compliance with, or consistent with what the new fees are for the, for the school district. And with that, unless we have any questions, that will conclude my presentation.
All right, thank you very much. Questions? Go ahead, Councilmember Kenny, for a motion.
I move, why? To accept, oh, that's so long. As first reading ordinance number 006/2023, adopting the Monroe and Snohomish School Districts 2022, 2027, capital facilities plans, providing for severability and establishing an effective date.
I have a motion from Councilmember Kenny and a second from Councilmember Hanford. For, for requested action motion one, showing in new business 7.2 on the screen. Any discussion? Saying none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes 6-0. Thank you. Councilmember Kenny, your light's still on. Did you want to proceed?
I move to accept as first reading ordinance number 009/2023, amending Monroe Municipal Code Chapter 3.50, School Impact Mitigation Fee Program, Providing for Severability and Establishing an Effective Date.
I have a motion from Councilmember Kenny, a second from Councilmember Hanford for motion number two, and under requested actions on new business slide 7.2. Any discussion on the motion? Saying none, I'll request, I'll call for the vote. All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes 6-0. Thank you very much, Director Bailey. Next item looks like you as well. This would be new business item number 7.3, ordinance number 0132023, Downtown Fee Waiver Program Extension. Director Bailey, go ahead.
Thank you. So the ordinance before you is, and has come before you in previous years. This is a renewal of a, of a, of a fee waiver program that the city initially adopted in 2015 to waive fees for development within the downtown. And there is an exhibit contained in the agenda bill that shows the, the map of the area that's, that's contained. The, the way the ordinances have been written or the program was set up is that it's, it's effective for, for one year. So we come back each year and, and do a renewal. So I was, we were here last year in July. The, the current, the current waiver expires in July, in July 20th of this year. And just as a little bit of background, the total, the total fees over the, the period of this, of the program that have been waived totals about $288,000. I will point out, there's a spreadsheet that's in the agenda bill that has a different number. And I will bring back a revised, revised spreadsheet for, for council for second reading. If you look at, if you, if you look at the, that spreadsheet, a majority of that $288,000 actually came during one year of waivers. And that was for the Rivers Edge project. But we've seen a, a steady flow of, of projects. In fact, for this year, I believe we have about $12,000, about $12,000 dollars, a little bit more than that in this 2022-2023 cycle. And, and this program was set up to incentivize development in downtown. And I think that the, the reasons that it was set up are still valid. We have a lot of discussions at EDAB about downtown development. And staff is certainly recommending that we, that the program be continued. So that I will complete my presentation. If you have any questions.
All right, thank you very much. Councilmember Davis, go ahead.
Thank you. I'd agree that this has been effective and continues to be effective in, in the downtown area there. And I look forward to continuing it. Based on that, I will move to accept as first reading ordinance number 013 dash, or slash 20323, renewing for an additional one-year period the temporary elimination of fees for certain permits associated with the development in the downtown area and fixing the time when the same shall become effective.
You have a motion from Councilmember Davis, a second from Councilmember Scarborough as read into the record by Councilmember Davis. Any discussion on the motion? Saying none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes 6-0. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Director. We're now going to move on to council member reports. I'm going to go ahead and start off with Councilmember Gamble to my left. Councilmember Gamble, go ahead.
All right. Still have all 10 fingers and 10 toes. Hope everybody had a great Fourth of July. I know just in monitoring, it looks like the fourth went off without a hitch. No fires, no. So it's always good to, to make it through and lots of fireworks that went off. I know we've got a couple communications on that, but also lots of money was made by some 501(c)(3)'s associated to those fireworks sales. And then the only thing I was going to say, I attended the session with the Monroe School District right before this around the SRO and the continuation of that contract. And just think it's, I mean, I know we've been pretty consistent over the last many, many years as a, as a council and just the city is supporting that program. That one, pretty dear and dear to me. I mean, I, I know I've talked several times. There's something that we can do. And obviously, we have a, a piece of that in the budgeting process that we go through on our side, but just continuing that partnership and how important it is that we continue that. I really appreciate the mayor, the city staff, and the police department in that relationship that we have because I just can't imagine, you know, having a, in the worst thing that could possibly happen and then knowing that there was something we could have done and we didn't do it. So as I said over there, I'll say it here. It's just, it's a line under the budget that needs to make, we need to make sure happens every year. And we need to constantly be looking at ways on how we can get better there and how we can help support as much as possible. And then get some stuff across the line so they can get some facility improvements from a security perspective as well. That's it.
All right, thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Davis.
Let me just echo what Councilmember Yawal said and, and that I agree with him and, and support him in that. And also, I had a wonderful Fourth of July again this year. I hope everybody else did. And other than that, that's all I had to report.
Thank you. Councilmember Foulter.
Sorry, still getting the hang of that. I was at the Music in the Park on Friday night. And as always, our chamber does a great job putting that on. It was a really great turnout. It's great to see a lot of my cohorts here and groove into the tunes. And I also, I do echo Mayor Thomas's sentiment about hopes and prayers for the safety of our co-council member Kyle Fisher as he is off fighting wildfires. And we thank him for serving his community in a way that we just cannot.
Thank you, Councilmember Foulter. Councilmember Kenny.
See if I can be a little quieter this time. Wow. I attended my first farmer's market last week and wow, just had some really wonderful vendors. And it's just really, really a fantastic event. And I have to give Janelle credit. It's just a really great farmer's market. It's grown every year and the quality of the vendors is just incredible. We had, you know, lavender wagon and soaps and jewelry and, you know, leather making and just all sorts of really, really wonderful things to draw people in. So just a huge, you know, hats off to Janelle for that. Also, did Music in the Park on Friday with Heather. And it was really, really wonderful, huge turnout. And we'll be there Friday night as well. And I just wanted to share with everyone on Saturday at the fairgrounds, there is what's called the History Walk, and it's put on through Snohomish County. And it's, we're going to have the Shanahan Cabin open and the Historical Society will be in there. That's usually what we open up during fairtime and we'll be there. We cleaned it this week, so it's all ready to go. And I think, I'm not 100% sure on all the activities they have planned, but I do know it's a Snohomish County event. So if you're not busy Saturday from 10 to 6, come on down to the fairgrounds and come to Frontierland and visit us. That's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Kenny. Councilmember Hanford. You're waiting for me to turn your light on?
I sure was. Thank you, Mayor. For turning my light on. Yes, definitely praying for Councilmember Fisher and team over there. Yeah, so the farmer's market was amazing a couple of weeks ago. And then the Fourth of July, I've got to tell you- And then the Fourth of July, I've got to tell you, I think the city did an amazing job at advertising. These are the hours, like the PR, I saw it all over social media, it was very well advertised. And the Fourth of July, I, I feel like for the most part, it was very quiet leading up to the fourth, in my opinion, this year. And I was out walking my dog on the Fourth of July morning. I didn't hear one thing all morning until right at nine o'clock. I was halfway around the lake and all of a sudden I heard like a, you know, Goliath sized fireworks going off and I was, oh, it must be nine. Looked at my watch and it sure was. It was nine o'clock and I thought we're getting good, like we're, we're respecting each other and following the rules to a point. So that was very encouraging. Very encouraging. So kudos to the staff on all the media blasts that we did. I think it worked. We should keep it up. And then I was gonna go to the Music in the Park with Julie and she wasn't feeling well and so I was bummed. And then I went outside for a second and it was just about as loud outside at my house. I don't need to go down. So I got my bonfire going and my smores. And holy cow, those singers were on fire. It was, I was so, I was thankful that I got to partake, but I was a little bummed that I wasn't seeing the live version. But yeah, that's, that's very cool. So that's it.
Thank you, Councilmember Hanford. Councilmember Scarborough, go ahead.
I really can't add to anything this man said, but I echo my support for everything that was said, so. Hats off to Janelle and the job she's doing at the Chamber for the things we have, the downtown thing, get together, close off the block, had a great turnout. A lot of band noise down there too. And we're getting ready for the parade, so. I have the, I have many of the name sheets over here that I'm going to take and put lanyards on so we don't have to look for lanyards come that morning. And I'll bring a roll of tape, you can bring yours too, because we're always looking for it. I don't know how many metal cars we'll have, but I might go to Ben Franklin and see if I can find some magnets too instead of. But they don't work on Corvettes because they're made of plastic, so. But I'll, I'll try and have some of that stuff, but that's been brought to my attention that not everybody's are in this. So if you have your own, then I guess you, you bring them ready to go or I'll have some tape, so. I don't know what's over here. I haven't taken inventory yet, but if you have yours and you want me to make lanyards for them, let me know.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Scarborough. We're going to go to Staff and Department Reports. We're going to start off with our H R I T report from Director Worthen. Councilmembers, you'll notice that because of the lack of microphones, we've got staff needing to come up to the podium, so.
Bailey's comments, I prefer to talk from my table, but hello. Three updates, H R I T and Communications. So Communications, the Mojo team, they were really behind all the pushing out of all the fireworks stuff and getting the boost on Facebook and all that. So glad that that worked. Also on your dais is the, the printouts for, this is the bigger items for the, for the move. And translating both English and Spanish, they'll be pushed out Monroe this week and they'll be available on the website if people have sort of in-depth questions on the move. To Human Resources, we have our filling positions. We had a treatment plant operator start on the fifth, which is great because those are hard to fill. We had new, two new hires, Renee Cooper, who is back here. She's a P D intern taking pictures for the P D. We have two Dean and Elijah are seasonals anniversary list. This is a big deal. Jacob Roberts, everybody with twenty-four years in June. So yeah. Also the number of Diet Dr. Peppers he typically has in a day. But in all seriousness, all seriousness, Jacob's worked here for a long time. That's actually his full-time hire date. He started here when he was in college, putting totes together when we started our recycling program, when he was taking the summer off from Washington State University, Mr. Campbell's favorite university. And Eloisa in the Police Department's been with us seventeen years and Kim Reeves is at the front desk of sixteen. I T, we continue to put, put stuff together, restart computers and additionally Jason's here tonight. Jason's working a lot on the stuff that we don't see on a daily basis, you know, the fiber, making sure the fibers connected in the new building, making sure the server room's ready to go. He, him and his crew worked, I believe, all day Saturday. So, and then obviously helping out to get this stuff set up. So those are the things that we don't see on a daily basis to get us moving. And I already touched on Communications, so any questions?
Thank you. Any questions for Director Worthen? Thank you, your team, for all your work.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to go to our Parks Department Report. Do we have somebody to give the report this evening? Director Farrell, you are now in the panel.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. So I'm glad to be here. So I know Becky was backing me up there. I noticed on the screen. So thanks, Becky. Really just a few items. This is for the month of June. You see the report in your agenda. And, but just I want to highlight a couple of items in the report and then one item outside of the report. In the report is the flowers. As you recall, in the end of May, the hanging baskets and the pots downtown were all planted and that was wonderful. And we gave kudos to all the organizations that support us for that. But in June, the flowers were raised that, that are going the end caps along Lewis Street, Main Street. They were raised for, I believe it's the second year at the high school in the greenhouse. And so students under our contact with the school district was Ann Lowe. We're grateful for all the help that all the students did and, and the teachers there. Growing those flowers and then our crew actually planted all those flowers. So really, really pleased with how it's all turned out. And so I just wanted to highlight that. The second item I want to highlight is, as you could see, we had several large events in June, the Pride Event, the Juneteenth Event, the Monroe Block Party Event. And, you know, it's just a pleasure to support the operations of these events and kudos to all of the event organizers that bring events like this to our community. And then the one item outside the report is just a, you know, a little Fourth of July thing, just as others, just echoing what others have mentioned. Is that the messaging went really well on the community. And so really, we just had to report just a couple of minor kind of juvenile acts, I'll call them. Of a trash can at Lake Ty, someone lit fireworks in it and then also a day or so after the fourth, somebody did the same sort of thing in a trash can at Scarborough apartment. That's really it. So, so we're really, really pleased that with, you know, their parks really turned out pretty well at the holidays. And that's all I have to report.
All right. Thank you very much, Director Farrell. Any questions for Director Farrell? All right. Thank you very much for all your work and your team's work. Next item on the agenda then is Economic Development Update with Mr. Christian or, oh, he's going to be up too. My bad. Tyler, you're now on the panel.
Can you hear me now? It's still dark for me, but as long as you can hear me, we'll go with it. Good evening, Mayor. Thank you for your time. Good evening, Council. Your Economic Development Advisory Board is in your packet. The Economic Development Advisory Board continues to meet twice a month on Thursday mornings. And we've had a lot of new members join our board fairly recently and I think we're making great strides so that everyone is kind of getting on the same page and understanding where we want to move in the future and be able to provide counsel with recommendations. A couple of highlights that I want to touch on is the Economic Development Advisory Board was able to have a little bit of a field trip. We met in May downtown Monroe. We got to walk the promenade. It was a wonderful experience. We got to see buildings. Talked about ownership, buildings that have invested, buildings that are working on investing, new, new tenants that could potentially be coming in. That was led by James Palmer. It was great for the Economic Development Advisory Board. We got to talk about strengths, maybe some weaknesses, some opportunities. And then also we got to continue to debrief that at a later meeting. And I believe that maybe in the future, some recommendations could come out of that. Another highlight I want to touch on was at the Summer Block Party, we did have a booth. Director Bailey was kind enough to let us tag along to his booth and we were able to give a short survey. Asking a couple of questions about what brings people to downtown and what they would like to see downtown. So we are still compiling all of those results. We were fortunate enough to be able to talk to a lot of people. And so that was wonderful just to get to meet a lot of people, interact. And we did get a lot of feedback from that. So that will be something that comes back to the council at a future date. Also included are two, two issues of the Monroe Business Newsletter as well as minutes. So Mr. Mayor, I'll turn it back over to you and I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Christian. Any questions? Okay, we have none. Thank you so much for the report and all the work you're doing.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Stay there. Councilmember Kenny, go ahead.
Thank you. Tyler, I just wanted to compliment you on the newsletter and I'm wondering who puts that together and who that is distributed to.
So I appreciate that compliment. I will pass that along to James Palmer. He does most of the work on putting that together. However, I'm assuming that you saw the new format. That format is through called, something called Constant Contact. So we have worked with our communications people as well as some internal staff. Ally Edwards is pretty much a wizard at Constant Contact. So we've been able to create those templates. And that's hopefully what the newsletter will look like going forward. It's hopefully a lot easier way for that information to be distributed and to be seen. That goes to a list of about fifteen hundred people. I can get you the exact number. But those are, it's really just an email list that James has collected over the years. From people that you can either subscribe to that on the website or you can also just send an email and we can add you to the list. So it's kind of just a grassroots, long-running list that we have collected.
Is the newsletter available on our regular city website for anyone to access?
Yes, it is. It is on the Economic Development Advisory Board page and we try and keep those up to date as best we can. So there's past issues as well as we try and get the current issue up there as soon as we can.
Great. One other piece of info I just wanted to pass along to the board is I had a lot of people comment that they really wish they had been able to attend the block party. But because it was at three o'clock on a Friday before they're out of work, that they weren't able to come. And I'm just wondering if in the future, a Saturday has been considered for that event so that more people can come.
I will make sure to bring that up on Thursday and I believe that Director Lewis from the Chamber will be in attendance. So that's something that we can discuss.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions? All right. Thank you. We're going to go ahead and move on to the next item on the agenda. That would be under item ten. Major, major mayor and administrative reports. We'll start off with item ten point one. This is City Administrator Report Extended Agenda. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For the council's study session next week on July eighteenth, both for the Finance Committee and for the study session. Both of those meetings are going to be canceled. Those items listed for the Finance Committee are getting moved to August. So you can have a week off next week from council meeting. I do have on the City Administrator's Report a motion to cancel that. Both those meetings. Looking forward then to the business meeting on July twenty-fifth, we will have a P three committee meeting. We will be having a couple of new business items, the proposed six-year capital facilities plan, which is going to be presented by Ben Swanson and Scott Peterson. And then a comprehensive plan update, the growth scenarios with our Community Development Director Lance Bailey. For the regular business meeting, under the consent agenda, we have our normal order of business. We have accounts payable, payroll, meeting minutes. And then we have the school district capital facility plan ordinance for adoption. So that would be second reading and adoption. And then the ordinance for the two thousand twenty-three budget amendment, which was presented this evening for first reading. So that will be second reading and adoption. And then the ordinance for the downtown fee waiver extension adoption, again, that'll be second reading and adoption. And then ordinance two thousand twenty-one, the building code adoption. This was presented to council back in either May or June. And it's finally moving forward for adoption under the consent agenda. And then our railroad avenue, moving that to a one-way roadway will also be under the consent agenda. Under new business, we will have the fee resolution update presented by Greg Plon. Pilot, I'll get it right. And then a resolution for an interfund loan with our Finance Director Becky Hasser. And then a resolution for the extreme heat policy. This is a new state code requirement. So we'll be bringing that to council for the first time under new business. And then the typical reports from finance won't be H R and I T since they just presented a report this evening. And then Community Development, Public Works and Police. And then of course, the Administrator and Mayor's Reports.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Kenny? Councilmember Gamble?
There we go. I'm going to be out of town on business on seven twenty-five and I probably will not be in a position to be able to take it, unfortunately.
Okay. We'll mark the calendar accordingly. Thank you. Any other notes for the calendar and availability? Thank you. Any other questions for the extended agenda for Administrator Night? Thank you. All right. So the Administrator Report, General, go ahead.
Great. It's been mentioned already and you have the paperwork in front of you about the city hall relocation. And staff is beginning to move out of the city hall building. So I think community development is next up. And I think the last department to move will be at the end of this month. And then we will all be in our temporary locations while we wait for the city hall renovation to take place. Just on a timing issue in general, it looks like we're looking at August or September for advertising for bid for that project. It'll be out for about four weeks. And so we are just a little bit behind schedule, not much, about four weeks behind schedule on getting that going. I know that the mayor and other council members are really anxious to ensure that we will have an opportunity to have a meeting in the new council chambers in two thousand twenty-five. So we are definitely focused on making that happen for all of you that are here this evening. And Councilmember Davis, of course, you will be invited back to participate in that since you've been such an important part of this project overall since the beginning. I also want to just say a, a couple of kudos. A couple of council members mentioned fireworks for the Fourth of July. And I want to say that this is the first year since I've been with the city from two thousand seventeen that we had no complaints at all from residents or business owners about fireworks. So again, I want to recognize Ben Worthen and our team from Mojo, who really got working in mid-June when we all suddenly discovered July fourth was just a couple of weeks away, came up with a really great outreach plan and then boosted on social media. And also to the Public Works Team who put out the reader board. And we're going to again, try and do more of that to make sure that everybody knows when fireworks are allowed. Community development played a part in ensuring that all of those that were selling fireworks within the city limits, let their customers also know when fireworks were allowed. So we did a much bigger push this year than we've done in past years and I think everybody here this evening really noticed the difference. So we'll continue to fine tune our outreach around that and continue to educate the public about when firework discharge is allowed. So I think it did make a big difference. Since we have no items for the July eighteenth agenda, we are looking for a motion to cancel the study session for July eighteenth and the Finance and Human Resources.
Councilmember Hanford, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to cancel the July eighteenth, two thousand twenty-three Monroe City Council Study Session and Finance Human Resources Committee Meeting.
I have a motion from Councilmember Hanford, a second from Councilmember Fulcher. For the suggested action that is on the screen right now to cancel the July eighteenth council meeting and also the committee meeting that is scheduled for that evening. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I will call for the vote. All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes six, zero. Thank you.
And then the last item I have is another kudos and that's to Becky Hasser and her team. We made a change in how our customers who are paying through our portal had to go in and re-enter all of their information and that could be hard message to get out to people. our customers who are paying through our portal had to go in and re-enter all of their information. And that could be hard message to get out to people. If you're on automatic pay, it's not something you tend to pay attention to. And I heard from Becky today that almost all of our customers have transferred over and we only had a couple of glitches. So again, it was part of our communications outreach with Mojo and Becky and her team that made a big difference, I think, in getting that word out to everybody. So congratulations to them as well. Lots of communication going on these days.
All right. Any questions for Administrator Night? All right. As for me, the mayor's report, you've got Monroe this week there in your packets. I too didn't receive any comments regarding fireworks. So that was different than in previous years. And had a great Fourth of July, not city-related, but I officiated my second wedding on on Friday for friends that I've known since she was probably three. And so that was fun. And I think that's it. So I have nothing else this evening. I'll give you some time back, not make any jokes about a really long extended what's it called? Executive session. I just, I'm done. So unless there's objection, we are adjourned for this evening. Saying none, we are adjourned. Have a great week, everybody.